Okay, I'll call this village board meeting for December 3rd, 2018 to order, please. Roll call.
Joe Zitzelsberger.
Here.
Sam Bowing.
Here.
Sue Springman.
Here.
Bill Random.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Okay, Bill Random is excused again. He has a family situation that he's dealing with. Next, we've got confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Julie?
I can confirm that the agenda was properly posted. It was provided to the newspaper, and it was published on the village's webpage last week.
Okay, thank you. Next, we've got consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sam Bowing.
Second.
Second by Susan Springman. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Public comment, is there anyone here who would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening?
I have no comment for him.
Okay, Todd, any comments?
I would just note that for folks to pay attention to all the neat things happening this season in Wanaquie, we had the great Light the Night event, which Chris and other departments had a role in, a little community by Don Tierney, and RJ Houston helped in providing a horse drawn carriage. Do you have an estimate on the number of people who participated?
No number for sure. I'd guess several hundred for sure.
Yeah, hundreds.
Hundreds, yeah.
And then there's a array of things this past weekend, and I just got an email from the chamber office. I'm not going to read through any of these, but just the next week has ten holiday events going on, let alone stuff for the remainder of the month. So, please, I'd encourage folks to take a look at the chamber website. There's a lot of good things going on.
Okay, very good. I also think, Sam, he provided a scissor lift that lifted me up into the air, and it didn't collapse, which was very positive, and from my perspective, on that. Also, we had our performance of the Nutcracker here in the community. I know Joe's involved with that with his daughter.
Yep.
That went very well, from what I understand. So, congratulations to those folks as well. Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on. Presentations. First one we have is presentation on monarch habitats and pledge resolution.
I'll introduce this quick. A Wanaquie resident, David Hogg, is here. He's gonna, you can come up to the podium, David, if you like. He's gonna provide a presentation, but he approached, he might have sent, Chris, you an email, and you asked Kevin and I to meet with him, and he has a proposal, and there's an item in your packet regarding the monarch pledge that you're gonna be asked to take action on tonight, following Dave's presentation, but I think you'll find it interesting, and perhaps something we can all get on board with. So, let me get this going for you, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
All yours.
Is this on? Yes, okay. Hi, everybody. My name's Dave Hogg. I've lived in Wanaquie for a little bit over a year, but I'm actually a retired professor from the UW in entomology. Lived in the area about forty years, but just recently Wanaquie. So, what I'm going to do is give a short presentation, and with the intent to persuade the board to adopt what's called the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. So, the monarch butterfly is certainly striking in appearance, and kind of one of our iconic insects. Everyone, I think, is probably familiar with the monarch. It's, you know, goes through the various life stages, like all butterflies of maws, with the egg, the caterpillar, the chrysalis, it's pretty striking. The caterpillar's kind of a cool looking thing, and then the adult with the orange and black. You all know what monarchs look like. There's some kind of cool things about monarchs that some people know. One thing is that they only eat milkweed. The caterpillars only feed on milkweed. That's their only plant that they can eat and develop on. But there are different types of milkweeds. Here are three most common: the common milkweed, swamp milkweed, and you probably all know what butterfly weed is. See it in gardens. Those are all members of the milkweed genus. Common milkweed is the one you're probably most familiar with. So anyhow, the thing that's interesting about this is that these plants are poisonous to most insects and most animals. But what the monarch has done very cleverly is learned or adapted to feeding on milkweeds, and it actually, what we call sequesters, the poisons in its body, so that makes the monarch poisonous to things that try to eat it. And that's one of the reasons that the butterfly, rather than trying to camouflage itself, advertises itself as being poisonous. So, birds, mainly bird predators, learn very quickly to leave monarchs alone. The other striking thing about monarchs is that they undergo this incredibly long-range migration, all the way to a fairly small area in the mountains west of Mexico City. So, all the monarchs east of the Rocky Mountains that you see during the summer end up flying back down and spending the winter in Mexico. It's an amazing phenomenon that we know something somewhat about, but we don't fully understand. So, those are the cool things. The problem is, sort of the butt of the story, is that monarchs are in decline. So, this shows the numbers starting in the mid-nineties to now, and generally a trend This has come about because of things that are happening in the mountains of Mexico, and also things that are happening up here. Mainly up here is loss of habitat, and that's mostly brought about by the use of herbicides that kill the milkweeds, and the way that we do agriculture now. So, that's kind of the issue, is that monarchs are in decline. So, what's happened is, over the past fifteen, ten years, that a lot of people have become engaged in undergoing conservation efforts to save the monarch. And there are all these organizations. This is kind of an umbrella organization called the Monarch Joint Venture, and these are all citizen science, citizen involvement sorts of organizations. The federal government has also gotten involved. The Fish and Wildlife Service is, has been tasked with making a decision by next June whether or not to list the monarch as either endangered or threatened, which would, if they do do that, it would unleash a lot of regulations that some might not be so good. But we'll see what happens. States have also undergone, or have undertaken, conservation efforts. So, in Wisconsin, we have what's called the Wisconsin Monarch Collaborative, and this is being coordinated by the Department of Natural Resources, and I'm actually on the, we have a task force, and we are coming up with efforts or ways that we can conserve monarchs in Wisconsin, and contribute to the overall health of the monarch population. But there's also, municipalities can also get involved, and this is through mainly this thing called the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, which is being coordinated by the National Wildlife Federation, and that's what I'm here mainly to talk about. So, I'll give you a little bit of detail on that. The monarch, the Mayor's Monarch Pledge asks that if a municipality wants to sign on, that they, I don't know if you can read this or not, I'll read it to you, that they implement at least three of the twenty-five following action items. They have these action items within a year of taking the pledge, and at least one action item, there are three categories: there are communications and convening, project and demonstration gardens, and systems change. At least one of the actions must be taken from the program and demonstration gardens section. So, that's the deal, three, just three out of this list. And actually, I don't know how many of you know Sue Truitt, but she is, goes by the name the Butterfly Lady. She's lived in Wanaquie forever. She's taught kindergarten at Heritage Grade School, and then I guess at Prairie. She and I met, and we actually came up with some recommendations as to what the village could do if you choose to join, do this pledge. One is issue a proclamation to raise awareness about the decline of the monarch butterfly and the species' need for habitat. The second would be to launch a public communication effort to encourage citizens to plant monarch gardens at their homes or in their neighborhoods. What's the other one? Okay. Host or support a day-to-plant sale or milkweed seed giveaway event. Sue had some good ideas for that. Plant a monarch-friendly demonstration garden at the city hall, in this case Village Hall, or another prominent location. Now, I spoke a little bit with Todd about setting that up. Launch a program to plant native milkweeds and nectar plants in school gardens by engaging students, teachers, and the community. Apparently Prairie's already doing this. I have a couple granddaughters at Arboretum, so I have contacts there, and Sue has contacts at Heritage, so we could certainly get that going at the grade schools. And change weed or mowing ordinances to allow for native prairies and plant habitats. So, an issue is mowing schedules, sometimes mow down milkweeds right when there are monarchs on the milkweed. So, taking that into account. So, that's one, two, three, four, that's six things right there that we could get going on. And I put some question marks. Okay, how do I get out of that? Okay, question marks on some other ones. Host or support a city monarch butterfly festival. I think that may be in the future, that's a possibility. Remove the milkweed from the list of noxious plants in city weed or landscaping ordinances, and I don't know if that applies here or not. Some places have the common milkweed. I mean, common milkweed is not a friendly plant to farmers. They want to get rid of it. It's particularly a problem because it has underground stems, and you can kill the top part of the plant, and still stems come up all over the place. Change landscape ordinances to support integrated pest management and reduce use of pesticides and insecticides. This would be insecticides and herbicides. This is something I know something about. That's what I did basically in my day job for almost forty years at the UW, studied integrated pest management. And the last one was a possibility, ban the use of neonicotinoid pesticides. I don't know if you have, how many of you have heard of the neonicotinoids? They're usually used, talked about in relationship to honeybees. But to ban the use of those on city lands, I don't know if you're using those on city lands. So, there's just some of the ideas. Something got missing here. The Wisconsin signatories, too, that have already taken this pledge, locally, Madison, Pittsburgh, and Shorewood Hills have, and out in the state, Milwaukee, while you can read the rest. So, that's what's happened so far, and if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to try to address them.
Board members, any questions? Do we have the ordinances that he's referring to? Do we have those in place currently?
I didn't check.
As an noxious weed? I did a brief check and didn't find it. I didn't do an extensive research on it.
But that'll be the task force in the coming twelve months.
Okay.
Now, the document that's in your packet is not a proclamation taking the pledge. It is a resolution accepting some of the responsibilities. We did not designate a specific day or month. It just says that you, as the president and the board, encourage returning monarchs to the municipality and doing what we can to help that happen.
And Dave, that's the extent you were seeking for this evening, right? Essentially, that's the pledge at this point, correct?
Yeah, but at some point, if we're gonna do the pledge, we've got to.
Right.
Somebody in an official capacity has to email the National Wildlife Federation and say, "We're on board," and this is what we're gonna do. And then there's some accountability, because I think you submitted an annual report as to what you've undertaken, what you've, what progress you've made.
I'm just glad you took Butterfly Petting Zoo in the administrator's office off of the list of recommended.
There you go.
Would have been fun.
Go ahead.
If I'm reading the, it's the pledge resolution.
Resolution.
Really only asks us to do one thing, and I wonder if we would, we want to look at it a little bit more comprehensively. You talked about a task force, Todd, I mean, to look at what else, because this is just one thing. Basically, to urge all residents to do their part by planting and protecting milkweed and nectar sources, so that every parcel of property may contribute to the survival of the monarch butterfly. You know what I mean? He had a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, again, this is to sort of initiate the interest on behalf of the board and the village president, which we'll then share, as you suggested, to the national organization. Then we take on a campaign from this point forward. That would include a number of the steps, and I see the chair of the future committee kind of on that side of the room.
Well, that was the thing. I mean, Sue Truitt and I would be happy to do whatever we can, and we're not throwing it on you to, yeah, you've got to do all these things.
Because I didn't read that as being that expansive, but if, I mean, we can do it anyway.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, what I see then is, if we approve this, then the next step would be to say we're gonna agree to the three steps that you talk about.
Well, at least three, yeah. Two, three that we'll do.
At least three.
Yeah.
That we would send the email to the nationals group, and then from there move forward, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That would be.
So, that's how I understand it. So, do I need to read this? Or, has people in the audience seen this? Otherwise, I'll read it if you'd like me to.
What I read was really what it said we do, otherwise it's all.
Okay, so then I look for a motion to approve?
Well, I worked two years ago with a Girl Scout group that put a little butterfly garden in the village center retention pond, so I know that the Girl Scouts in the area are behind it, so.
Yeah.
We can tack on with them. I can make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion by Philom, second by, was that you and Aaron?
Yeah.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask him a question? Is it too late?
Too late, but we can.
I just want to know how long a monarch lives. That's a long trip.
Oh, go ahead. I think everybody will be okay with that question.
How long does a monarch live?
Well, how long does it live?
Uh-huh.
Okay, there's a, well, there are two answers to this question.
So long.
Butterflies that fly to Mexico are the ones that fly back in the spring, so they live from, they live a long time, six months or so. But they don't reproduce in Mexico, they just hang out in these.
On the beach.
Yeah. They're up the mountain. They fly them up per trees.
Do we call those snow butterflies? Oh, butterflies, okay, I got it.
But during the summer, the butterfly itself, it takes about a month to go from baby all the way through those stages to butterfly. Butterfly will live maybe three or four weeks.
Oh. Really?
Long time for that, for a couple of dollars.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
I mean, they're all, they're.
I need to not take in anything.
Okay, thank you so much.
Little butterflies.
Okay, next we have our update on our library construction project. I'm assuming.
Thank you, Dave. We'll be in touch.
Jeff, you're going to be giving that?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
I've never followed a butterfly population before. I feel like there was a big crescendo, and now it's just like.
It was interesting. I liked it.
But I will tell you this, the new library, the areas that aren't gonna have mowed grass are all gonna be native prairie planting with grasses and wildflowers and legumes, and I will make sure that we're gonna have at least one species of milkweed in with that mix, so. And that's village property, so you already got one of your items checked off.
Nope.
Okay, you're welcome.
There's a few new people on the board, so I'll introduce myself.
I'm Jeff Vine. I'm acting as the construction manager for the library project for the village, so basically I'm the owner's rep for the village. And we've got library board members here, and library director here tonight, too, and we thought we'd give you an update on a little bit about the project, and then go through the development budget, because we haven't done that for quite a while. So, as far as the project goes, we're about halfway through the schedule, so the concrete foundations are poured, the slabs are poured, the exterior structure of the building's up, the roof structure's going on, roofing's going on, wall sheeting's going on, masonry, some windows, so we're starting to get the exterior shell of the building closed in, hopefully sooner rather than later with the weather that's coming. And then they'll start to finish out the interior, and the project is gonna be completed in July, and we're hoping to be open August 1st or sometime in August. We need some time to get all the furniture in, and the, all the stuff, the books and shelves, and all of those types of things, before we can have a public opening there. A couple challenges that we've had, the site, some history on that, was the alloy property. There was contamination inside the existing buildings and the soil. All of that stuff has been removed. There was an EPA project which cleaned up the site, but there, the site also had issues with some poor soil areas, not contaminated soil, but soil that wasn't good for bearing for the building, because of some of the existing buildings and disruption of the soil through the alloy process, but then also just the fact that it's a low-lying area. There's a couple of wetland designations actually on the site, so it's a little bit soft. So, one of our challenges with construction was getting, removing some of that poor bearing soil, and getting all of that replaced, but like I said before, we've got the foundations in, and the parking lots are now in, so all of that soil issue has been dealt with, and now we're just gonna be finishing construction and hope to have no problems whatsoever as we, as we finish things up. I did want to point out a couple of things in this development budget that are, that are different than previous budgets that we've gone through. The first section of the spreadsheet is revenues, and we had had a goal from way back when of $1.5 million that the library was campaigning for contributions from the public, and we've increased the goal. We have $1.5 million already pledged, and we have $1.2 million, which is collected and in the bank, which kind of shocked me. If you've ever been a part of a church committee, there's lots of pledges, but there isn't a lot of actual checks that show up that early in the game. So, we actually have $1.2 million collected, so we've raised the goal to $1.65, so $1,650,000 for that campaign. And then there's another large item here, which is a half a million dollars from the WEDC grant that we have, we were awarded the grant, but now we need to justify and give the documentation for the costs that were spent on eligible items, and we're gonna be going through that fairly soon here, and we'll be submitting by the end of the year, and we hope to have those funds sometime early next year from them. So, we'll have, you know, potentially a million and a half, maybe $2 million worth of revenue that'll be coming in before the library's even completed, and so we'll talk about that later when we talk about where we are with the overall budget goals. And we also have an interested party. There's a line item on here for sale of the existing library property, and we have some interest in that, that property, and we hope to have that sold sometime in the next year as well. As far as things that have changed with the cost of the project, if we go down to the construction project line item, so there's a general construction contract, and Vogel Brothers out of Madison is our general contractor, and they're doing a good job, and we've had certain change orders. We've been using contingency money to pay for the soil issues and some other things that have come up on the site, and then we have other changes, like we've now included the pedestrian bridge from the parking area, and we've got the sidewalk that's all up and down. North Madison Street's gonna be replaced as part of the project as well. And so, the total to date through change order number three with Vogel is $10,276,000, and then we're projecting that there's maybe another $150,000 of change orders, some of those we know about, and then there's some contingency there for other things that might come up between now and the end of the project. If we were, if we were to look way back in the past, we were projecting $10 million for construction and a half a million for contingency, and I think when we get done, so that would be $10,500,000, I think when we get done with the project, we'll be below that $10,500,000 number, once everything has been committed to Vogel for construction Let's see. And then, including the bridge, I just wanted to also mention, we worked hard to reduce some other costs in the budget so that we could make sure we stayed within our total overall budget, and Eric did a good job reducing some of the other expenditures, so that we could fit that bridge in, and then we also had significant donations from Parisi, who is the site contractor, who's doing the excavation and concrete work, and therefore they were doing a large portion of the bridge work. They made a significant contribution to our fund by reducing fees and cost on the bridge, and then Vogel also did that. They cut their fee in half for the, managing the bridge work, and also that became a large contribution for our capital campaign. So, thank you to both of those contractors for those large contributions. Let's see here. And then, like I'd mentioned, there's some, some smaller numbers here with things like AV systems and other, other parts of the project that aren't part of Vogel's contract, but are things that the library will be buying directly, so they're trying to manage all of that. So, we had talked about an overall total cost for the project not exceeding $15 million, and right now we're projecting that at $14,555,000. And then we had talked about a net project cost not exceeding $12 million, and right now we're at $11,340,000. So, both of those things are better than budget, but the net number is, is better than the gross number, because we have more revenue, because we have had more success with the capital campaign. So, I think all of those numbers are, are positive, and should be, I think everybody should be happy that we are where we are with construction and that we're, we're under budget. Are there questions?
I'm just gonna clap that you're under the $12 million myself. I'm happy that we've done such a good job. If you could share, maybe, Eric, what kind of things did you have to maybe maneuver or cut potentially to get that bridge in? I'm just curious about that.
We really haven't made many sacrifices of things that we wanted out of the gate. There were some things, technology-wise, like an automated sorting machine, that's $200,000, where we kind of looked at it and said, "That's a nice to have, that's not a critical to have." So, the building is designed so that it can accommodate that system in the future, but we're not gonna go live with it next year. And looking at retaining some of our current technology from the current building and just moving it, as opposed to just buying new. So, I think we're still gonna have everything that we wanted out of the gate without, you know, going over that $15 million, that $12 million budget. So, I'm very pleased about that.
Other board member questions, if you have any? So, I don't usually do it, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask a question about the library tonight? You are doing a fabulous job.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I'm gonna say, based on no questions and everything. So, thank you.
Okay, next we've got licenses and permits, discuss and take action, operator license
application for Alyssa Maron.
One application for your consideration's been reviewed by the police department and staff, subject to our policy on operator license approvals. Staff would recommend, subject to final review from the police department and completion on approved responsible beverage server training course.
Okay, look for a motion?
I have approval.
Motion by Susan Springman.
Second.
Second by Joe Zitzelsberger. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Next in our new business, we have discuss and take action on amendment to strand task order 18.02 for design services related to 2019 road improvement projects. Kevin?
Todd's bringing up page 34 of the packet, if you want to turn to that page. The public works committee identified eleven projects for 2019. As you remember, we do have a million dollars in our budget for road projects in 2019. While we're showing, you know, $1.3 million, we'll have to reduce that as part of our, we'll bid it in such a way that we can reduce our work as needed, depending on how the bids come in. We have a contingency of 265,000, so it depends if we have to eat into that or not. So, that's the eleven projects that the committee identified, just with the understanding that it might need to be reduced if our bids come in as expected.
Okay. Could you share with the board and people that are here and for the camera what the condition pavement rating scales work on?
Sure. Pavement ratings are, is a rating system that we use on all of our roadways, so they rate from a one up to a 10. 10 being a brand-new roadway, one being down to a roadway that's probably almost down to deteriorating to the level of gravel. And what we're targeting lately, and what the public works committee wanted to do, is really target roads where we can resurface them. really target roads where we can resurface them as opposed to reconstructing them. If we have to reconstructing them compared to resurfacing, it costs about five times as much money to do the full reconstruct because it includes curving gutter and replacing sidewalk and utilities and, and rebuilding the entire base. With resurfacing, we've identified these projects where we expect to be able to get 15-plus years of life after resurfacing these projects. So we can do, you know, four to five times as many projects by doing resurfacing projects if we can catch these in time. And I think that's the emphasis at the committee level. Let's try and get as many of these resurfacing projects before they deteriorate where we have to reconstruct them.
Okay. The other question I'd ask is you're saying that, put in the perspective from a cost perspective, when we did Fifth Street and redid that, what was the cost when we had to do the total reconstruct? Do you remember that?
I don't.
Okay. But probably almost what our total is for that year, is my guess.
Yeah. If you compare, we're, we're using numbers that we use for Holiday Drive. So if you compare it, what we did on Holiday Drive to what we did in the Cheyenne neighborhood, we did about five times as much, we got about five times as much roadway rebuilt as we did in the Cheyenne neighborhood for Holiday Drive resurfacing.
Okay.
Do you want to ask a question because the public might be asking? So how many reconstruct roads are there out there not resurfaced?
I don't know the breakdown. It's, we've identified a number of projects for, that need to be reconstructed over the next seven years. We've had, we've identified at least $5 million of resurfacing projects. We estimate that our total projects, if we, if we rate all our projects and identify a cost estimate to them, just using some pretty broad estimates because without looking in detail, we're at, back when we did this in 2015, 16, we were at about $20 million worth of roadwork, what we would need in order to complete all our road projects. In reality, that number based on current projections is closer to 28 million dollars. So to give you a sense, if we continue to spend a million dollars a year, it could take 28 years before we got to all our projects.
Right, but the question was reconstruct versus resurface. Are there, do we know what, how many, how many dollars we need to reconstruct? Because those I am assuming are in worse shape to resurface.
Yeah. The resurfacing is, the resurfacing is probably seven of that 28 million dollars. So there's probably 20, you know, 20, 20 million to 8 million would be a good general number to use.
That's something we all need to know in terms of. How do we attack that? Okay.
Well, that was included in, is the forecasting for next year and coming up with capital improvement plans in order to grow that fund in a way that reduce it down from 28 years to something more manageable.
Right.
So with the pavement ratings two and three that you've shown on here, based on Sue's comment and question there, how many of the roads do we have that are in these categories right now?
About 7 million, 7, 8 million dollars worth of projects.
That they're added to already?
So, you know, you could take this list of 11 and multiply about seven.
But they're already at a two rating? Or they're going to be at a two?
No, they're a two or above. The, the two rating is somewhat general. It's, sometimes a two has to be reconstructed, sometimes you have to, you can resurface a two. When we get to that point, then we go out and reevaluate those projects easier, usually a year before, because a lot, a lot of things can happen over the winter time. I mean, a, a three can turn to two in, in terms of deteriorating faster than we thought. So for like 2020, we'll begin in 2019 trying to put a list together, but we generally wait till spring just to see how that road reacts during the, the winter time to make sure it's still a candidate for resurfacing it.
Chris, last time we had a resident express concern about their downtown street. Did we follow up on that?
Yes.
Meaning, we looked at it, would we, did we determine anything?
It, West Street is, is on our, on our list, on our $5 million list for, in the next five years for resurfacing. The, I think the other request was Fifth Street. That one is not, that, that's not been identified. I mean, that does have some, some rolling to it in terms of, and nothing near as drastic as what's happening on Woodland Drive, but it's certainly a drivable road and really wouldn't hit our, it wouldn't really hit the threshold. It would be pretty low on our, our list. It wouldn't be identif, if we identified, say, $5 million is what we've done for the next, for resurfacing, another $7 million for reconstruct, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make that cutoff. It would be below that. West Street, however, would, would make the cut.
Anybody else? Otherwise, look for a motion to approve the test strand task order for the design services related to these projects.
I make a motion, we approve the amendment to strand task order 18-02 as presented.
Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Oh, second.
I heard Sue's voice first, I'm going to give a second to Sue. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call, call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Then we've got a change in our agenda, we're moving one item forward. Did I do the right one here?
Yeah, old business one.
Number one on the backside, we're going to move that one to in, in front of our next new item. So that would be to discuss and take action on Forward Development Group and Hy-Vee request for TIF participation in Woodland Crest development. We're going in open session for this right now. Correct?
Yep.
And I don't know, Kevin, do you want to sort of fill, fill everyone in on our process today?
I'd say let Dan go.
Or just let Dan handle it?
Let Dan go.
That's what they pay him the big bucks for.
Well, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be, be here with you again this evening. My name is Dan O'Callahan, I'm a real estate lawyer with Forward Development Group. I'm here to give you an update this evening on the Woodland Crest development project. This, as you'll recall, is the 30-acre site at the intersection of Highway Q and Woodland Drive. We were here first thing this year, back in January or, or February, to give an introduction to this project. We presented a concept plan describing the general uses we were looking to bring to the site. We envisioned this as a, a key gateway development for the village and are looking to bring a mixture of uses. So just to really quickly reorient everyone, this is a mixed-use neighborhood concept. It's consistent with the village's comprehensive plan. It's a retail development anchored here, I'll stay close to the microphone, anchored at the intersection of Woodland Drive and Highway Q with a full-service grocery store. There's also a convenience store with a coffee drive-through on that site and fuel. There are some other commercial uses along Highway Q.
Please, please. All right, thank you.
Some other commercial lots along Highway Q, just kind of going around the site here counterclockwise, that parcel identified as parcel four. We've identified that as a, as an opportunity for some senior housing, working around to the backside of the development along Peaceful Valley Parkway. That's an area plan for future multifamily. There would be some market-rate multifamily development up along the backside there, site number six. That'd be a site suitable for perhaps some office uses or maybe a full-service sit-down restaurant-type use. And then some other stormwater features, stormwater management features in the corner of the site. So we've had a series of public meetings over the course of the year on this project, a public hearing with the plan commission, where the plan commission got to see the general development plan that you're looking at now. And I'd like to say that the, the plan was generally well-received and the plan commission recommended or endorsed that plan, although no formal action's been taken by the village board on this project yet. We've been working through a number of issues and I wanted to just bring you up to speed and update you on that tonight. So most recently, as you'll recall, the, the village board has had several meetings where you've considered the TIF application that our development team put forward back in February. The original TIF application, which contemplated that, that this entire site would be developed at once, showed a gap in the project financing of about $4 million. And we were asking the, the village to consider using tax agreement financing to help with those costs. Now, the feedback that we received from, Todd's getting ahead of me here, but that's okay.
Kevin told me to go.
No, it's all right, it's all right. The, the feedback that we received from your professional staff was that that was going to be a heavy lift. There were a number of concerns with, with the proposal as it was initially presented. So we worked with staff over the summer and into the fall to try to refine and revise our concept for the, the development. And what we arrived at is a phased approach to development. Now we've got the phasing slide. And we think that this phased approach is actually going to allow us to develop the site more efficiently and address some of the concerns that came up during the TIF discussion. So we've divided the site into, into two phases. Phase one, which is shown here in red, and phase two in blue. We're anticipating that we would install all of the public infrastructure necessary to serve this 30 acre, roughly 30-acre site as part of the first phase of development. So you'll see the streets, Sarah Lane and Simon Crestway extended through the site in green. That's all part of the phase one work that would take place. These are all some, a, a part of the public improvement package, including the intersection there at Woodland Drive and Simon Crestway, which would be signalized. Again, that's part of the public improvement work to be done in phase one, along with some of the lane work on Highway Q and Peaceful Valley Parkway. So by, so we would begin with the first phase in 2019, including completion of all of the public improvements, which is obviously the first item of work that needs to take place before any other construction activity could happen on this site. Quite a bit of grading that needs to happen before those improvements go in. And then start to see some of the commercial uses develop on this. Hopefully, this kind of phased approach also works well with the village's ongoing housing study. We would look to get to the next phase, phase two, only after that housing study was completed because the senior housing and the multifamily housing are in that phase, in that second phase. So this phased approach allows us to control our costs and, and cut costs because we're really reducing the holding cost of development. So we've brought the, the gap in our financing from 4 million to 2. So the current proposal that we have before the village is to consider TIF financing for $2 million that would be used solely for the public improvements, Simon Crestway, Sarah Lane, the signalized intersection, et cetera. We are proposing that would be done as a pay-as-you-go TIF. So if you're familiar with TIF financing, there are generally two ways that it can be done. One is the good old-fashioned, kind of original way was conceived where the municipality does the borrowing and puts the money into the, to the project to fund the public improvements. And then the municipality's borrowing is paid back over a series of years from the tax increment that's generated from the project. We're proposing a pay-as-you-go TIF where the borrowing is done on the private side, the money is invested in the infrastructure, and then that financing is paid back, again, using the tax increment that's generated from this development. So that, it would be a $2 million pay-as-you-go TIF for the public infrastructure on this. The remainder of the development costs, all of that grading and other onsite work would be the responsibility of the developer for development group. That work, again, would take place in 2019. Would take the better part of, of all of 2019 to get that work done. So there's quite a bit of work to be done. And once that work was done, then the site would be ready for some of those commercial uses to, to come to the village. So just, let me run through a timeline really quickly. I don't have a slide to put up for that, but...
This one? Or no?
No.
No?
No. If you go back to the phasing plan, I'll just kind of walk you through, walk you through our general timeline. So again, quite a bit of work to be done here, not the least of which is continuing the public process with the village. We have a good several months of us, ahead of us at least, in terms of working through the, the TIF creation process, finishing the annexation, the zoning process, getting through the general development plan, having the specific implementation plan approved for the first phase of development. So a lot of work, a lot of public process, a number of additional meetings that have to take place. So we would envision the next, you know, 90 days, maybe 120 days, working with the village on those items, which would put us in a position to ask, be asking the village board for final approval on this project sometime in the spring, perhaps April, where the village board would be taking action on the annexation, the zoning, approving the development agreements, hopefully approving the tax increment financing for the infrastructure. All of that we would envision the board doing together in the spring. After which, we'd be in a position to close on the land and start the development. So if that took place round about June, that would put us in a position to start construction in June or July. And we'd work through the summer and fall, probably through November 2019, doing the grading and all the infrastructure work. We would, you're obviously going to be concerned with making sure that work gets done. So we would propose that there be an escrow established when we begin the work. We would put funds in that escrow to guarantee completion of the work. It's a pretty typical process the village is used to going through. There'd be a development agreement that would provide all this. We've already had some discussions with the village attorney about that. And then once all that work was done, again, you'd be in a position to see the commercial construction start. We have a tenant, a purchaser lined up for that anchor, anchor corner there, Hy-Vee. And you've had some presentations, your plan commission has had a presentation from Hy-Vee on its concept plan for that. And again, no formal action has been, been taken. But we do have Hy-Vee's entire real estate development team here. Let me just quickly introduce the folks in the front row. We've got John Brem, who's the director of site planning for Hy-Vee. John was with us at the plan commission meeting, you may recall. Max Jacobson from Mid-America Realty. Peter Hesch, who is the assistant vice president for store development, for...
Vice president.
Vice, vice president for store development, excuse me, Peter. And Ray Cooper, the director of real estate. So we're very pleased to have them with us. They came in from Des Moines today to be here with us. So we really appreciate the partnership that we've had with them throughout the process. That's the quick update. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And Chris, if it'd be okay, I think we could add a couple of comments and I can start out and Brian and Todd may want to add some additional comments. Just so a little bit more background on, on what the deal would include. The, as, as Dan said, the TIF financing, really the, what the, is provided is for public improvements only. So the TIF financing is only providing financing of the public improvements. And it's a pagel, like he said. That limits our risk in terms of what the, what the village's involvement. The increment that would be generated for the public improvements is also going to be, is going to be limited in scope. And it'd be limited to the Hy-Vee site. So the, you know, the northwest side of, of Sarah Lane and Simon Crestway extended. So that all the other, phase two, and even the, the south of, of Sarah Lane of the commercial would not be a part of the, the value that'd be used to generate the TIF for the, for the public improvements. And then thirdly, the blue, the, the phase two, there's no guarantee on when that can proceed. As, as you know, we're going through our housing study. We're not, we're not anticipating we're going to be even completing with that until sometime in the spring. And so there's no guarantee on when, when that development could proceed. It's going to have to be consistent, whatever our findings are in that housing study. It's going to come in, in zoning as agriculture. Brian?
Yeah, what I would just add that, so when it comes to the TIF district, it would only be the Hy-Vee lots and then, and it's going to have to be one sliver of phase two because it has to be mixed-use to satisfy the law.
Dan, do you want to, do you want to kind of show that boundary?
What am I doing? I can't make it work. There we go.
Yeah, right.
So the district is envisioned to be this 10-acre parcel here and then this roughly, oh, this is a bit less than two acres here. So this would be the TIF district that we've been discussing. The increment from that development would pay the $2 million of borrowing for all of this infrastructure. This development here, all of this development here and up here, excuse me, up to this point, would be outside of the district and the development there would go to the general fund immediately.
Yeah, so I mean, one of the benefits... Yeah, so I mean, one of the benefits to everyone would be the Phase One. There is part of Phase One that could be immediately developed by Forward that would go on a tax base for all the taxing jurisdictions right away. I, I think the other thing to point out, just on the public improvements, is the discussions that we've had with the developer, anyone who, from the village who's been present, has noted how important those public improvements are, and specifically, the intersection, the signalized intersection at Woodland and Simon Crestway, having all of Simon Crestway completed as part of Phase One, all of Sarah Lane completed as part of Phase One. Obviously, it's going to benefit that land itself, but it also provides a great benefit, we think, particularly with the school district. And I think it's been a good, there's been a lot of good discussions among the parties, because to Forward Development's credit, they came up with a plan recently to kind of make it work, so that we could get the public improvements done as part of Phase One.
Yeah, one, one additional public improvement is along Peaceville Valley Parkway. There's a gap in our trail system. We have the trail that runs all up and down County Trunk Q, and all along the parkway, except through this development. So we have a gap from where the blue starts, all the way out to County Trunk Q. And I've, I've heard that from, from many, that that's an important linkage that's missing as part of our system, so that they get, they get to the, this, the parkway, and they, or get to the end of the parkway on the trail system, and they, they have to stop and turn around, because they can't get all the way out around to County Trunk Q to get onto that system.
One way to potentially think about this is the village residents would be getting a new grocery store and public improvements with a limited size of TIF district. And I think, you know, that, that sounds, based on the discussions that we've had with Hy-Vee and Forward, that sounds like a pretty good deal.
Okay. So, Board members, do you have any questions for, are we going to the Hy-Vee people too with questions, if we need to?
Depends who, yeah.
Okay.
I'll start.
I'm going to leave it up to these guys first, as I always do, if you have questions or concerns.
Was Phase One, that retail as part of Phase One before, that second piece? Was that in the original?
What now?
So the, the part south of Sarah Lane was just added.
It was, so that's new.
Correct, correct. The, the...
It's not in the TIF, but it's not as part of the TIF district.
You must think there's some market for retail.
Yeah, and actually, it was part... Yeah, that's retail.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was part of the original concept plan that we presented back, back in February. And what we initially envisioned was that this would all kind of be developed simultaneously.
Oh, that wasn't, my question was whether that was what we...
We added it.
We added it, okay, that's...
Since the last meeting, yeah.
Since the last meeting.
That's okay, I just wanted to clarify it. And so the, and we're adding that one multifamily, because we need a mixed-use definition, but the increment from the multifamily isn't part of the increment used to pay off the public improvements, right?
With the understanding that it's, it's still part of Phase Two, and it'll happen some, some point in the future, not necessarily immediately.
Right, but it's not part of the increment.
It would be part of the increment.
That one...
Well, it is.
That one, the one building, that...
Just the one building.
No, I know where it is, okay. So it is part of the increment to be used for that, okay. But we're not promising for sure that the zoning is housing in these areas, or are we now?
Well, what we...
I know we're waiting for the housing study, but what is the understanding, so it's clear today? Is it, the type of housing is going to be, or housing?
Let me try first, you know, and Brian can fill in. Our comprehensive plan identifies this as multifamily. However, the zoning's not in place. So when they do go to zoning, it'll have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. But we're, we're going to go on, as part of the annexation agreement, we're going to make it clear that they'll have to wait until the housing study's complete, and it'll have to comply with whatever the findings are in the housing study.
Even if it's inconsistent with the comp plan? Because what if you, it's determined there's too much market rate? I, I don't know what it's going to say.
That's more of a timing issue than it is a land use issue.
They'd have to wait.
So it, you know, they may, if they, if they decide if our housing study, say, you know, puts it off too far into the future, and they don't, they don't want to wait that long, they may want to come back and amend the comprehensive plan for something else. But the comprehensive plan identifies it as multifamily. It just doesn't have a date when that multifamily can occur. And that's really the purpose of the housing study, is to really set the parameters of when this housing study can, you know, how, when the housing in a particular area can occur.
And what type? Isn't that right?
Yes, that could be a type two.
But, yeah, what kind of housing it is. So my concern would be if that delayed it too much, and you couldn't take the increment for the $2 million needed as the pay-go.
We're assuming, we're not, we're not counting that as part of the, we're assuming no increment in order to make the deal work.
Oh, I thought you just told me you were.
Well, I, I think it's...
Well, it's, it's, it will be part of the increment that's available, but in our calculations, it's not needed in order to satisfy the, the closing of, of the TIF district.
Okay, because that, that was my concern, that if they didn't get the housing, they might be short on it, okay.
It would be more be icing on the cake, which would allow you to close the district more quickly.
Quickly, okay.
But that, that's a good point, and staff has been very clear with us about that risk. It's one that we, that makes us a little uncomfortable, quite honestly. But we do recognize that it's part of the village's comprehensive plan. And real estate development is, is a business about risk and managing risk. So we've decided to make the, the decision to move forward with the project, knowing that risk. We've had very good partnership with the village, and we hope to be able to move forward with that at some point.
And I know you've done preliminary engineering costing for the public improvements, the $2 million. What if it's short? What if you, when you get, you know how numbers go.
Up usually.
Yep. So if it comes in higher, how do you handle that?
If the bidding on that, that public work is...
More than two.
More than $2 million.
Because you won't be able to bid till probably early in the year. You have to get engineering.
We're, we're pretty confident in the estimating that we've done.
What happens if it's over? Have you thought that through?
It would have to be a developer responsibility, who'd be making the commitment if we proceed with the project.
I hope it doesn't, but, you know.
That's right.
I would say if that is the case, based on our assumptions and predictions for TIF performance, this, the TIF, if I believe correctly, closes four, if not five years prior to the statutory closure year? So there remains capacity, should there be increased expenses? You give me the look.
Yeah, you're going to, if it's over the $2 million, they're responsible.
Because the, the $2 million increment only comes from the Hy-Vee site, so...
Well, so the question is, if, so developer responsible in pay-go status? In other words, that you...
I think, Todd, we're talking about a level of detail that we really haven't completely resolved yet. I mean, that's, that's a good point, and we haven't even started the drafting of developer. We've really just put bullet points together. So at some point, we will have to address that.
Okay.
I, I think it's important, though, that fundamentally, the one thing that we have agreed on is that increment will only be used to pay for the public improvements.
Right.
And I would say, as we sit tonight, we feel very confident in our estimating thus far. And we would get to the point before, you know, the, the village is giving final approvals on this. We would get to that point where we would have more certainty on that.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron, any questions?
No.
Phil?
No.
Can I comment?
You sure can.
So we've had some very productive meetings with Forward Development Group over the last several months. One of the things that was important to me when we were talking with staff was making sure that the flow of traffic and everything was going to be there when this started. We didn't want to wait until Hy-Vee starts their project. We wanted to get those public improvements done, because that's what our true goal was with this, in addition to bringing Hy-Vee here to Wanakee. And I think the plan that's been proposed accomplishes that for us. I, I was, I was not a big proponent of looking at any TIFs, as we've had some contentious ones here in the last several years. And this one really does, in my opinion, do a very nice job for the community. We're taking care of some infrastructure, using the money, monies for those things specifically. And by getting it right away, we have that road open and established. And I do believe that that is one of our worst intersections right now. If anybody has any children that play sports over in that area, it's generally a terrible bottleneck at certain times of the day, especially during that time. This will open that up, that will have multiple avenues for people to go. So I think that's an important part of this whole project, in my opinion. Outside of that, any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I feel bad you guys came from Des Moines and nobody asked you a question. I, I do understand that people from Des Moines do like to come to Wisconsin in the wintertime.
It's actually warm right here tonight, so...
I think we have less snow probably right now. So thank you for coming to my thought.
Driving down that I-80. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Back to...
All right, thank you.
All right, so then we're going to go back to discuss and take action to negotiate employment terms for clerk candidate.
We should, we should do the clerk, I think we should do the closed session for this item first.
So, I mean, it's, it's up to you, I mean, we have additional information that we could probably share with you as part of closed session with the other, the other board members about how the negotiations have gone. You don't have, I mean, as Kevin also noted, though, there's definitely more details that we're going to have to work through. There's going to be a number of agreements that are going to be associated with this proposed development. It's kind of up to you at this point, whether or not you'd like to go into closed session to get the updates, or they will come to you certainly as we, you know, move along. I think we've definitely hit the high points, though.
Yeah, there's not much left, right.
What, what is important for us to know tonight from the board, for us to take next steps?
I, I think if the village board is largely in, likes what they heard tonight with regret, I think really specifically to the creation of a TIF district for this limited purpose. And again, we've, as, as we've worked through this, we've tried to limit the property that would be in the TIF district. That's one issue, is, and then if you're in favor of that, then certainly we're going to have to get in contact with Ellers and Associates to start that work. And then if you're generally okay with the phasing approach, what we would do is we would start working on multiple agreements with multiple different parties. We're going to have an annexation agreement that's going to involve Forward Development Group and the current owner of the property, Lone Star LLC, so that we can address the phasing issues and things like Kevin identified, where what's going to be in Phase Two is actually going to come in as the agricultural holdings district and not ultimately be rezoned. And there'll be other details. We're going to have a development agreement that's going to involve Hy-Vee and Forward Development Group that's going to deal more specifically with the timing of the construction of the public improvements in 2019, as we identified tonight. And then also, really, the development of, more specifically, to the two lots in Phase One, or the two parcels in Phase One. We're going to have a TIF agreement specifically with Hy-Vee that's going to deal with the increment generation. And the one thing to point out again is, this is a pay-go TIF. The village does not have to borrow any money for the public improvements. The developers, Hy-Vee plus Forward Development Group together, are putting up all the money for the public improvements. So I, I think from our perspective, we're getting a limited-sized TIF district with other potential commercial development right out of the gate that could help the other taxing jurisdictions. We're not having to put up any money to do this. The developers are putting up the money. And the increment is specifically only going to go towards the public improvements that are going to be done right of way. And so that would, those types of concepts would be part of the development agreement and the TIF agreements. And the last agreement Dan had touched on is an escrow agreement that's going to involve the village and Forward Development Group and Hy-Vee. And effectively, what that's going to do is, at some point in time in the future, presumably the day that the, the closings occur, and effectively what's going to happen is, when you look at the land for the public improvements and the land for Phase One, Forward Development Group is going to be acquiring that land from Lone Star LLC, and then immediately flipping the Hy-Vee lot to Hy-Vee. At that point, there's going to be a certain amount of money that's going to be put in an escrow agreement that's effectively going to act as a letter of credit for the village, to make sure that the public improvements get done. And just like we have with any development agreement for, for example, the subdivision, you know, we always get a letter of credit. So if, for some reason, the developer starts the public improvements but doesn't finish them, we get to draw on that money and complete it. And in this case, the escrow agreement is going to have language like a letter of credit that we typically get. But those are going to be the four agreements. And I think, as long as the village board is okay with what they've heard tonight, we'll start working on those documents and getting in contact with Ellers about discussions on the potential TIF district.
So suggested motion would be to direct and authorize staff to proceed with the TIF creation process and necessary, and, and prepare the necessary agreements for forward consideration. And I would note that all those have a, a public involvement process.
Can I ask where the plant commission comes into this? Because if they haven't taken any action on something, shouldn't they, pretty quick, before you get too far?
They're going to, they're going to be involved in the, in the general development plan and the site plan, and the general development plan for the overall developments and for the site plan for the Hy-Vee lot and for the other Phase Two parcel, although I think...
And the TIF project plan.
And this project plan. My understanding is that the, the, the general development plan in concept has already gone to the plant commission and received a thumbs up. And the specific, the site plan for the Hy-Vee lot actually may have already been conditionally approved by the plant commission back at the meeting in June, although we, that's one of the things that we need to double back on.
I want to make sure it gets to them soon enough.
You're not approving anything. All you're doing is starting the process, authorizing to get the process going.
What I'm saying is, I'd like it to get to them soon enough, so that they don't feel like they're, you know, kind of behind, behind on it.
Well, and it's also going to have to go to joint plan, too, just so you know.
Because I have some, not about the Hy-Vee site, but I have some concerns about the parking ratios and the rest, and whether there's adequate parking on site. They're pretty low ratios.
Well, I would say on the parking issues, that's something that we would definitely work through with them through the drafting of the general development plan, which certainly would make its way to the plant commission.
Right.
The process, through the public, through the plan, through the public hearings for it, to the board, to the public hearing, to the board, the TIF, the TIF hearings, all those things have to take place with this. So that's why when we talk, it's really spring before all this would even...
We, we could take it to the plant commission pretty quickly.
My only concern is some site plan changes that could be recommended impact the developer. You'd want their feedback on it sooner than later, I mean, just so they know what they have to do. But you can schedule it, you know how to do it, that's just my comment.
The only last comment I have, and it's kind of piggybacking, is the staff and I really pressed hard for Forward to have to have all the public improvements done in the spring.
In 2019. Start, start them, start them by July and have them completed in 2019.
That was important to me. Hy-Vee may not start for another year after that potentially, maybe two, you never know. Because they're involved, though, they have money in the game, so they're probably not going to wait on it very long, is my guess, so...
Well, so we don't have a commitment. My only concern would be foregoing another grocery store.
I think we have a significant commitment from Hy-Vee.
We, we have a commitment from Hy-Vee in, in, in two ways, basically, as soon as the closing occurs. First of all, they will have purchased Phase One, the land for the, for their lot. The second is, they are contributing a fairly large amount of money as, to, to, to making sure that the public improvements get done in 2019. And, and, and again, the escrow agreement is going to be drafted, I mean, like a letter of credit. And, and what a letter of credit typically does is, it says basically, you got to start your improvements within a certain period of time, and you have to finish them within a certain period of time. And if you don't, then the village gets to draw on that money and complete the public improvements. Well, that's effectively what the escrow agreement is going to say. And so Hy-Vee, you know, what they've told us, and I think we understand this, is they can't put in a contract an absolute guarantee as to when they would start the building and when they would complete the building. But they are willing to go so far as to put that money into the escrow agreement to make sure that the public improvements get done. And so it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's probably just, just short of a guarantee of, hey, we're giving you X number of dollars for the public improvements, and we're buying the land. That's going to be a, that's going to be roughly, you know, multi-million dollars that they're going to have invested in this project to make sure that they actually get it done.
I just want to make sure we don't forego getting another grocery store, because it takes so long and it's tied up.
Yes, that's, that is, that has been part of the discussions that we've had with them. And, and I think that, at least at a staff level, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, because of all of the investments that they're going to be making on the front end, even if they can't give us a, a guarantee as to when the, the store would be done, they're going to have an incentive to get it done as soon as possible, because they're going to be the entity that is collecting the money under the, with the TIF increment. And if there's no TIF increment to be generated, they don't get paid back. And again, I can't stress enough, the village does not have to make any financial investment in this. There is no borrowing by the village whatsoever.
So Kevin, do you want to read that motion you said?
Yeah, it was, direct and authorize staff to proceed with the TIF... Yeah, it was, "Direct and authorize staff to proceed with the TIF creation and prepare necessary agreements for board consideration." If you can read it.
Who would be making that motion?
I think I would make that motion, because I, I like this, that we finally have taken land completely out of these TIFs, and the taxpayers more or less win on this, because they get what they get to drive on, they get an improvement on an intersection, and hopefully, fairly soon, they get that second grocery store they want. So I make a motion, we direct staff to move forward with, with the necessary steps, as outlined in his motion.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams. Do we have a second? Second, Pedro Zitzelberger.
Sam, are you abstaining?
I'm going to abstain. But we haven't gotten there yet, so...
So I'll call, any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any others?
I will abstain.
Okay.
Got it.
Five, five yes, one abstain.
Yes.
Okay. Then back to new business, discuss and take action, negotiate employment terms for clerk candidate. Are we going automatically, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, that's the recommendation. We have a candidate we'd like to discuss with the board, and depending on whether or not the board sees fit to, to enter into an employment agreement with this person, that would then have, then would lead us into the next item for discussion, which would be the organizational design, as it relates to the skills and abilities of that particular clerk candidate. So we're suggesting closed session first to discuss those clerk terms.
Okay, I'm just going to make a comment on this for the audience in the camera. Julie was not fired, nor are we adding another clerk. Julie is retiring in January, so we're going through the process of hiring and recruiting someone right now. Okay, so the village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851(c) for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So I'd look for a motion to go into closed session.
Move we go into closed session.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Sam Baldwin. Julie roll call vote.
Joe Zitzelberger? Sam Baldwin?